The following program, The Russ Belleville Show, is intended for responsible adults only. We advocate to the repeal of marijuana prohibition for adults. We discuss the science, culture, and controversy about America's marijuana laws. We do not advocate any illegal activity, and encourage all listeners to learn their state and federal marijuana laws. Opinions and claims made by guests and advertisers on The Russ Belleville Show are their own, and The Russ Belleville Show cannot be held legally responsible for their validity or reliability. Viewer discretion is advised. Spanning the continent to bring you the truth about cannabis and marijuana law reform.
I smoke pot, and I like that a lot.
From the promise of legalization. To the agony of prohibition.
One major responsibility is to encourage people to use less drugs.
The Russ Belleville Show, the voice of the Marijuana Nation.
I hear you had a question for me.
Here's your host, Radical Russ Belleville.
Good day, tokers and tokets, and welcome to the show. It is Friday, April 4th, 2014, and it's got to be 4/20 somewhere in the world. Welcome. We're so glad you could be here for our final show of the week, show number 379. We finally made it to the weekend, and I hope you have something exciting going on this weekend. I believe, is it the Ann Arbor Hash Bash that happens this weekend? The first of the springtime leading into summertime leading into autumn festival season, usually runs from Ann Arbor Hash Bash here in the first weekend of April through the Great Midwest Harvest Fest in the middle of October, and we'll bring you as much coverage as, from as many of those events as possible. If you're going to be going to one of those events and you'd like to submit coverage to 4/20 Radio, just let us know. Visit our contact page at 420radio.org/contact. Now, on today's show, we've got a very special guest joining us, N.A. Poe. You remember him from The Panic Hour, also his protests at the Liberty Bell along with Chris Goldstein and Don D'Zarn. He'll be joining us at half past the hour to talk about his new run for Philadelphia City Council, and how his federal probation is causing some problems in trying to run for city council in Philadelphia. So, N.A. Poe, joining us at half past the hour. Also on the show today in behind the headlines, we brought you that story of the unfortunate young man who fell to his death from a hotel balcony after eating a marijuana cookie. The prohibitionists have jumped on this and are just beating the drums about this so-called marijuana death. We'll take a look behind the headlines to show you the rash of balcony deaths that have actually taken place in this past year. Also, when we get to our Radical Rant segment, we've got part two of our Fire Michelle Lenhart rant. We're going to talk about her sudden concern for the dogs. Oh, it's not just what about the children, folks, it's what about the dogs now for Michelle Lenhart in support of marijuana prohibition. We'll deconstruct why that is completely full of crap. And we've also got our Daily Toker Tunes today. We got a group that emailed in to Herb Thrasher. They're called Mammoth Salmon, so we're going to give them a run today, pardon the pun, on our Daily Toker Tunes. But first, we got our 4/20 Radio news, and in the headlines today, stunning news from the Obama administration about rescheduling of marijuana. We've also got a look at Maryland trying to resurrect its decriminal bill, New Jersey man suing for his medical marijuana and right to a job, and Connecticut dispensaries.
We'll be right back after these messages from our 4/20 friendly sponsors. Support these advertisers, because their ad money goes straight to The Russ Belleville Show. You're tuned into The Russ Belleville Show, the voice of the Marijuana Nation.
The law offices of Omar Figueroa would like to remind you to stand up for your rights. Please do not give up your precious liberties. There's nothing wrong with standing up for our constitutional rights, and in fact, it's the best way to honor the Constitution that recognizes our natural rights. Treat law enforcement with respect, and respect the Constitution by standing up for your rights. If you're detained or arrested, stand up for your rights by repeating, "I respectfully invoke all of my legal and constitutional rights. I do not consent to any search and seizure. I want to remain silent, and I want to speak with my attorney," Omar Figueroa. Omar Figueroa has more than a decade of experience in federal and California courts, and graduated from Yale University, Stanford Law School, and Trial Lawyers College. Please contact the law offices of Omar Figueroa at 415-489-0420, or 707-829-0215, or on the web at omarfigueroa.com. You can get 4/20 Radio on the go with the Ustream video app for Android and iPhone. Go to rad-r.us/420ustream, or just click the Ustream app icon for Android or iPhone below the live radio feed at 420radio.org. Cannabis Outreach Collective is an alternative health and wellness option located in Gladstone, Oregon, that serves patients in the Portland area and beyond. We are a full-service alternative health and wellness collective accommodating patients with natural, organic, holistic, and homeopathic remedies, nutritional guidance, advice, education, and medical cannabis, fully in accordance with Oregon OMMP law. You can find out more about Cannabis Outreach Collective on Facebook at COC503, or by emailing cannabisoutreachcollective503@gmail.com, or by telephone at 503-853-1319. Check out our menu on Weed Maps and visit Cannabis Outreach Collective today.
This is your 4/20 Radio News for Friday, April 4th, 2014. I'm Russ Belleville. The Obama administration has signaled that it would support a rescheduling of marijuana. Speaking in front of the House Appropriations Committee this morning, Attorney General Eric Holder told lawmakers, "We'd be more than glad to work with Congress if there is a desire to look at and reexamine how the drug is scheduled, and as I said, there is a great degree of expertise that exists in Congress." Cannabis is currently a Schedule I drug, meaning it is a dangerous drug of abuse with no medical utility. Moving cannabis to a lower schedule could benefit medical research and allow dispensaries to deduct normal business expenses. Holder added, "It is something that ultimately Congress would have to change, and I think that our administration would be glad to work with Congress if such a proposal were made." Yet, the Controlled Substances Act specifically grants him the authority to, "Remove any drug or other substance from the schedules if he finds that the drug or other substance does not meet the requirements for inclusion in any schedule." A Maryland delegate with a distinguished civil rights background is attempting to revive a bill to decriminalize possession of 10 grams of marijuana. Delegate Kiefer J. Mitchell, Jr., proposed an amendment that would rescue the bill that had been killed by the House Judiciary Committee in lieu of a two-year task force to study the issue. Mitchell said, "We, in good conscience, cannot allow a task force to take place for two years while there are racial disparities. We believe that it is not something that should be continued to be studied as the facts continue to stare us in the face." It is rare to overcome committee opposition to a bill, but Delegate Mitchell and members of the Legislative Black Caucus believe there is enough support in the full assembly. Debate was tabled until Saturday by the committee chairman, Joseph F. Valario, Jr., who strongly opposes decriminalization. A New Jersey medical marijuana patient is suing New Jersey Transit for firing him due to a failed drug test. 57-year-old Charlie Davis is a registered patient who uses marijuana for neuropathic pain. When he was bumped from his job for a more senior employee, Charlie applied for another open position. When he was told the position was safety-sensitive and required a drug test, Charlie admitted his medical marijuana status to the medical director and offered to apply for a non-safety-sensitive position instead. The medical director told him he had no choice but to take the test, and then the drug rehab required for failing the test. Charlie's been out of work now since the beginning of the year. When asked about Charlie's case, a New Jersey Transit spokesman cited federal transportation regulations requiring drug testing. Supreme Courts in California, Oregon, Washington, and Michigan have all sided with the right of employers to fire medical marijuana patients over failed drug tests. Connecticut has announced the winners of its six statewide dispensaries. Twenty-seven businesses applied for the licenses, which were determined based on business information, location and site plan, business plan, marketing plan, and financial and organizational information. One location is being opened by a pharmacist with 27 years of experience who always wanted to open her own independent drugstore. She will be participating in a program that collects survey information from patients on the cannabis varieties they use for their ailments, and makes that data available to researchers. Connecticut now has just shy of 2,000 registered medical marijuana patients. Governor Chris Christie of New Jersey might consider allowing adults to use medical marijuana edibles, but will absolutely positively not legalize marijuana. The embattled governor recently approved changes to the state's restrictive medical marijuana law to allow only minors to use medicated edibles. Christie was asked by the mother of a 14-year-old who suffers severe epilepsy, "What happens when my son turns 18 and can no longer eat the edibles as allowed by law?" Governor Christie said he would be willing to work with doctors as they look at that, and he'd be listening to the doctors, but basically deflected the question, adding, "I'm not going to make marijuana legal in this state for recreational use. I'm not going to make it decriminalized. I am not going to turn our state into a place where people fly into to get high. And if people want legalized marijuana in the state, elect a new governor." Actually, Governor Christie, people are flying into New Jersey to avoid LaGuardia Airport, but if removing you from office is what it takes to legalize, challenge accepted. This has been your 4/20 Radio News for Friday, April 4th, 2014. I'm Russ Belleville. Transcripts of 4/20 Radio News are available at our website at 420radio.org. When we come back, we will go behind the headlines and take a look at how the prohibitionists are ghoulishly savoring the unfortunate death of a young student in Denver. You're listening to The Russ Belleville Show on 420radio.org. We'll be right back.
When you are starting up a medical cannabis business, you don't just want any attorney. You want a fired-up lawyer who understands the needs of cannabis consumers. The law office of Lauren Vasquez is your fired-up lawyer for the cannabis industry. Lauren Vasquez knows the details of California marijuana law from both a personal and professional angle. Lauren Vasquez rose from the ranks of college-normal activist to become one of the Bay Area's best marijuana lawyers. Visit her website, fireduplawyer.com, or call 1-855-MMJLAWS for more information. That's 855-665-5297 for Lauren Vasquez, your fired-up lawyer, or email fireduplawyer@gmail.com. The number again is 855-MMJLAWS, 855-665-5297, for your fired-up lawyer, Lauren Vasquez. Lauren Vasquez is an activist attorney you can trust. Call today.
I'm Subcool from Team Green Avenger. At tga genetics dot com, we are working on the leading edge of medical strains. Our strains are rigorously tested for THC, CBD, THCV, and other critical cannabinoids. Know your grow. Check out our genetic diversity at tga genetics dot com, the home of Jilly Bean, Jack the Ripper, Vortex, and other award-winning cannabis strains.
The Russ Belleville Show with Radical Russ Belleville from Portland, Oregon, live weekdays, 3:00 PM Pacific, 6:00 PM Eastern, 11:00 PM GMT, with replays at 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM, 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM Pacific Time, right here on 420radio.org.
Welcome back, everyone. Time for us to go behind the headlines, and the headline this week was, "Denver Coroner: Man Fell to Death After Eating Marijuana Cookies." That was from John Ingle's story in the Denver Post, and before I could even read the story, my Twitter feed was lighting up. You know, I follow most of the prohibitionist Twitter accounts, and I was disgusted at their ghoulish satisfaction that a 19-year-old man fell to his death from a hotel balcony after eating a marijuana cookie. So desperate are they for bad news about Colorado legalization that they pounced on this story like a paparazzi on a Kardashian. Here's some of the lowlights. Kevin Sebette, the head of anti-legalization group Project Sam, said, "Student fell to death after eating pot cookie, but I thought no one ever died from marijuana." Christine Tatum, the wife of Denver rehab entrepreneur Christian Thurstone, said, "Add profound denial and delusion to the long list of maladies afflicting many weed legalization supporters," in response to Sebette. Sebette then responded, "Coroner says student who fell to death after eating marijuana cookie didn't have alcohol or other drugs in system." Then Scott M. Gagnon, who's the head of Project Sam in Maine, responding to me and Christine Tatum, said, "It does kind of put a dent in that whole safer argument. Marijuana impairment is serious with serious outcomes." Then LN75, who's the head of the Hillsborough County, Florida Anti-Drug Alliance, said, "Pot does have harmful effects. Man dies after fall in Denver, coroner says, related to marijuana intoxication." Well, then clearly marijuana needs to remain prohibited, and adults who use it need to be sent to jail, right? After all, a 19-year-old, someone underage for marijuana use in Colorado, got ahold of a marijuana cookie, got high as hell, and fell off a hotel balcony. Now, never mind the fact that Casa Columbia has surveyed teens for 30 years and found 80% to 90% of them have easy or fairly easy access to marijuana even under prohibition. Obviously, marijuana kills because it can make you dizzy and lead you to fall off of tall buildings, so by God, it has to be banned. Except, if that's the case, what are we going to do about these other news stories? This one came out this week from the New York Daily News. "Arizona State University Student Falls to Death from Balcony After Partying." Naomi McLendon, age 18, fell from a 10th-floor balcony at an off-campus ASU student high-rise early Sunday. She appeared to be drunk at the time, and it was filmed struggling to walk through the building's lobby, authorities said. Well, damn, it looks like an underage person got ahold of a drug that affected her balance and led her to fall from a tall building that killed her. I guess it's time we repealed the 21st Amendment and return to alcohol prohibition. From the New York Times, "First Date Ends in a Deadly Fall from a 17th-story Balcony." That is where Jennifer Rossoff was shortly before 1:00 AM on Thursday, having retired to her 17th-floor balcony in Midtown with a man she had just met for a first date. As they talked, she casually hoisted herself atop the wide metal railing, cigarette in hand. Then Ms. Rossoff was gone. She fell 140 feet to the construction scaffolding at the base of the building at 400 East 57th Street and died from the impact. E.gads, now cigarette smoking is causing people to fall off balconies. Well, I guess we have to make nicotine a Schedule I drug and imprison any adult who buys a pack of cigarettes. Oh, what's this? Tata Motors boss Carl Slim rode with wife before apparent suicide, from the London Telegraph. The wife of a British businessman who fell from a luxury Bangkok hotel on an apparent suicide has told police that they had rode at length about a family problem before his death. Carl Slim, age 51, the managing director of Tata Motors, India's biggest carmaker, seemingly climbed through a small window and jumped from his hotel room on the 22nd floor of the five-star Shangri-La Hotel while his wife Sally was asleep, tied detectives believe. Uh-oh. Now, the deadly balcony fall epidemic has spread from drugs to marital fights. We'd better consider banning marriage, or at least arguments during marriage. Here's one from Huffington Post. "Scott Lewis Dead: Hypnotist Plunges to Death from Balcony." U.S. stage hypnotist Scott Lewis has plunged to his death from the balcony of a Sydney apartment, Australia police said on Sunday. Really? Now hypnotism is leading people over the edge to plunge to their deaths from tall buildings. What else are we going to have to ban? Well, looky here, Australian Broadcast Company. Woman falls from balcony on the Central Coast. Seven News Australia: Baby boy dies after tragic balcony fall on New South Wales Central Coast. Sydney Morning Herald: Man killed after Waterloo balcony fall. And one man is seriously dead, and three other people have been seriously injured after falling from balconies and roofs in separate accidents in New South Wales in just one day, police said. That does it. Time to ban Australia. Although, you know, nine out of 10 of the most deadly things in the world live in Australia, so that might not be a bad idea. Oops, sorry.
Maybe it's just time to ban balconies.
Ban balconies, that's it. We'll be right back.
Wood Pipes Smoke Shop and Speakeasy is your source for cannabis community gear in southern Wisconsin. Owners Brian and Tammy Wood are located in Kendall, just outside of Madison, and they've got everything for the smoking enthusiast, including a full assortment of pipes, water pipes, hookahs, bubblers, one-hitters, and so much more. They're open noon to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and can help you with your detoxification therapies as well. Call 608-466-7473, or email woodpipes@yahoo.com for more information. That's 608-466-7473, or email woodpipes@yahoo.com. And as always, go pack, go.
Support The Russ Belleville Show. Text the word Russ to 420420 and connect with the National Cannabis Coalition. You can also send $10 to The Russ Belleville Show right from your smartphone. That's Russ to 420420. You're listening to Radical Russ on The Russ Belleville Show. Everyone knows music and marijuana go together, so let's wind up our 20-after break with The Russ Belleville Show's Daily Toker Tunes, the best in pod-safe 4/20 music from around the web. Today is Rockin' Friday, featuring rock, metal, and the hard edge of alternative country. Now, sit back and enjoy your daily tokorune.
All right, welcome back, everybody. Time for us to rock, and one of my favorite things about working here is all of the new and upcoming artists that bring us this great music that we play. We got Herb Thrasher on the line, who's got one of those artists for you. How you doing, Herb?
Oh, man, we're doing great, having a great day, just hanging out at work. Actually, where I work, I'm actually getting today to hang out with four turkey buzzards, actually flying around, and they don't know I'm in my van, and so it's really cool.
Real, actual turkey buzzards, all right.
Yeah, I celebrate nature with them, and so it's all good, man. We've got a great rock. Real excited tonight on Herb Thrasher Flower. You guys know I've been talking about the Portland Metal Winter Olympics for the past few weeks. I ended up going about three weeks ago and had a great time, and went to the championship this weekend, the medal round, and Zeraxakil ended up winning the gold medal. And tonight, they're going to be in studio. We're going to talk with them, find out their story, how they did it, how they came up with this name, and just all kinds of stuff. You know, Portland's a big, huge music city these days, lots of bands, so many bands signed, and really has its own sound. You guys definitely need to check out a lot of these Portland bands. And so really excited to talk about that tonight, along with Rodney James Dio tribute albums out, so we'll talk about that, and get into some other stuff as we always do. But real excited to get Zeraxakil's thoughts on everything. And then today on Rockin' Friday, we have a band that actually played the Portland Metal Winter Olympics, and that is Mammoth Salmon. And these guys are based right out of here in Portland, a brand-new band. It was really, it used to be two dudes, Paul Bezaiak and Mitch Maydinger, and back in November, they kind of released a five-song EP, and it's on their Bandcamp page, but they also ended up getting, enlisting a bass player, Alex Bateman, so now they've got a full-throttle three, and these guys are ready to go. They're very heavy, doomful, very stony. Definitely appreciate the cause, and they've been playing a lot of gigs around, and they've just really got some good tunes. They got a really, a lot of great reviews from the Sludge Lord and Echoes and Dust on their brand-new five-tune EP. So you guys definitely go check that out. It's called The Call of the Mammoth, and you can find that on their Bandcamp page. Just type in mammothsammon.bandcamp.com, and you can check them out. And today's tune is Sacred Smoke, and you guys definitely need to turn it up, load those bowls, and fire it up for Mammoth Salmon. And these guys are badass. And we'll talk to you guys tonight on Herb Thrasher Flower Hour. Safe weekend, folks.
Right on. Thank you, Herb. This is Mammoth Salmon from Portland, Oregon.
Support The Russ Belleville Show. Text the word Russ to 420420 and connect with the National Cannabis Coalition. You can also send $10 to The Russ the National Cannabis Coalition. You can also send $10 to the Russ Belleville Show right from your smartphone. That's Russ to 420420. You're listening to Radical Russ on the Russ Belleville Show.
Hi, this is Willie Nelson, and I need your help. Alcohol prohibition didn't work in the 20s, and marijuana prohibition isn't working today. It's time we stop arresting law-abiding citizens because they prefer marijuana over alcohol. Nearly 2,000 Americans are arrested every day on marijuana charges. We're unfairly destroying the lives and careers of hundreds of thousands of people each year simply because they smoke marijuana. These are not criminals. They're average citizens like you, good neighbors who work hard, raise families, pay taxes, and contribute to their communities. We need your help to end marijuana prohibition once and for all. It's the fair thing to do.
For more information, contact NORML, the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. Call toll-free 888-67-N-O-R-M-L, or visit their website at N-O-R-M-L.org.
Drug Truth Network's Century of Lies with Dean Becker from Houston, Texas, every Monday at 7:00 AM Pacific, 10:00 AM Eastern, and 3:00 PM GMT, right here on 420radio.org.
Activism begins with act. The Russ Belleville Show features the stories of hard-working, grassroots activists, working for an end to prohibition in today's activist agenda.
Welcome back, everyone. 32 after the hour, and for today's activist agenda, we are going to a man who walks the walk and talks the talk. It's N.A. Poe from the Panic Hour out there in Philadelphia. How you doing? Are you on the line?
Russ, I'm here. How are you?
Yeah, good. Glad to hear you. Yeah, I'm looking at your picture, and I don't even recognize you, dude. Last time I saw you, you had the beard and the long hair. What's happened?
Well, you know, I think that I'm running for city council here in Philadelphia, and I think that I need to portray a more clean-cut image. I mean, you know, being involved in the marijuana movement, everyone wants to take a shot at you for being a pothead, so I just want to show them that I can play ball a little bit.
All right. Well, glad to hear that.
And if that's all it takes.
Oh, yeah. And we know that the man beneath the image is still the same, and if folks are new to your story, fill them in a little bit on how things went for you and Chris and Don out there at the Liberty Bell. You have any updates on that for us?
Sure. Actually, well, we started Smokedown Prohibition about, God, it's like almost a year and a half ago now. And, you know, just simple disobedience rallied at the Liberty Bell. I was arrested and set up on charges of assaulting a federal officer, which I eventually pled out into a probationary, like, one-year probation. And my colleagues, Chris Goldstein and Don Dizarn, were recently sentenced to $3,000 fines and two years of probation for their participation in the event. So the federal government is going out of the way to prosecute, you know, the heads of these organizations, and, you know, scarily enough, living in a post-9/11 society, being, you know, watched on social media, and then targeted and taken out is really scary, especially when all we're trying to do is legalize marijuana. Russ, we're not trying to do anything that crazy, are we?
Yeah, I'm really confused, because I thought for sure, I heard the administration say that the federal government doesn't go after the individual users of marijuana, just the kingpins.
Yeah, well, I guess we're the kingpins. And also, I actually got a memo today that they are trying to readjust my probation and modify my probation so that I can't associate with the Panic Hour, which I created. I cannot use any of the Panic Hour's social media at all. And they're trying to make me break up with my girlfriend, and my girlfriend's gonna have to move out, because she's a member of the Panic Hour. They're trying to say that I can't associate with her, or I would be in violation of my probation.
And is this because the Panic Hour was cited as part of your probation in the first place, or it was an entity that was found guilty of something?
I mean, it wasn't. Actually, it was struck down by, when the prosecution tried to put, you know, disassociation with the Panic Hour, and, you know, try to curb my social media First Amendment activity, the judge struck it down. Now, two days after I launched a city council campaign, and the return of Smokedown Prohibition's coming back on 420, which I, for the record, have absolutely nothing to do with, you know, they have decided to try to modify my probation. It just shows that we're a fairly effective group of ragtag individuals, working with no money, and just a lot of heart and a lot of fight in us, and, you know, they're not gonna be able to take us out.
Yeah. When you consider how much money that's been spent by the courts and the federal park system in prosecuting you guys, and how little money in response you've had to do to get this response from them, it kind of gives lie to how ineffective this prohibition is, and how hard they're trying to, you know, not protect people or enforce the law, but really silence people. That's really what this comes down to.
Yeah, it's absolutely scary, Russ. I mean, like, look, when we started Smokedown Prohibition, we just wanted to see what, you know, Chris Goldstein gets mad when I say this, but, you know, when we started this up, I was like, well, let's see if people come out and do this, you know? And then it started to get some steam, and then the federal government came at us very, very hard, and, you know, I'm not one to back down. I think, you know, this Philadelphia's a wonderful place for this to happen, Russ, because everyone here has so much fight in them, and it's kind of got that attitude where it's like, oh, yeah, you think you're gonna bully me? Well, you know, look out. So, you know, Smokedown Prohibition, I mean, I believe that they're trying to do it one more time on 420, just because of the success with it last year on 420. And, you know, we've made some great legislative measures. You know, we have decriminalization as a bill in city council, which they have actually tabled at this point. So that's part of my campaign for city council, is making sure the decriminalization bill goes through, especially with Washington DC, our nation's capital, passing it with a $25 fine. I mean, if the nation's capital is gonna take that kind of precedent, then, you know, that should be setting a precedent for how the rest of the country deals with small amounts of marijuana.
How is this, how are these probation terms affecting other aspects of your campaign? Are they, is it just the social media aspect they're trying to squelch, or is there other conditions that make this difficult?
Well, not really. I mean, you know, they say that anything I do want to do lawfully, you know, is fine. And, you know, it's just, they're really mad about Smokedown Prohibition. They don't want us to promote it. They don't want us to talk about it. You know, they worked very hard to shut it down, and they don't want to see us return. As far as the campaign, you know, Russ, I didn't realize how much I learned in activism. I put together such a great team of people to help me with this run. And, you know, we've been getting a lot of press in Philadelphia. I mean, this is the home of the fictional Rocky character. You know, I think that, you know, we're really gonna press them. There's a big democratic machine in Philadelphia that feels as if they can disappoint whoever they want, the city council, through the unions and through their cronies. Well, you know what? They're gonna have to go through me, and we've been making a lot of noise. We got some press going. We have some videos going. We have a great online presence. And, you know, I'm not saying I'm gonna win, but I'm saying that I am gonna cause a shitstorm for as long as I possibly can.
Well, that's great. Now, are you running independently? Are you backed by a party? What's the structure here?
Well, I'm running the Libertarian Party. What was amazing is, you know, another way that running for office is discouraged. It's having to get 1,785 ballot signatures to even get on the ballot. So what I did was, I talked to some of my friends in the Libertarian Party of Philadelphia, and found out that a third party can have someone on the ballot. So I went down to City Hall, I registered, and I even got to put in a special paper that allowed me to run under my stage name, Nikki Allen Poe, which is kind of fun, because I can go out there, and I'm not necessarily playing a character, but, you know, a lot of my notoriety comes from that name. So I was a little nervous of using my real name, and now I don't have to. So, you know, it's just exciting. It's been a whirlwind week, and, you know, in the very, in the very beginning, I figured it'll be a chapter in the book.
Now, you mentioned that originally in your case, the judge rejected sentencing you these probation terms that you couldn't associate with Panic Hour and such, but now your probation people are trying to reinstate that. Is this someplace where the judge would come back and slap them down, or are you gonna have to get lawyers to fight this? And what's the next step for you?
Well, you know, the thing is about it is, I had, I could either sign it or request a hearing. I haven't requested a hearing. And one of the top law firms in Philadelphia has actually been talking to them a little bit about helping me out with the case, and I am going to straight up fight them tooth and nail, because, you know, it's very ironic that it comes on the heels of my city council announcement. It comes on the heels of Chris and Don's sentencing. It comes on the heels of the return of Smokedown Prohibition. I mean, we're a ragtag group of productives. I don't know what this is scared of. There's a big bad federal government, Russ. I don't know why they're scared of me and my friends.
Yeah, it is pretty amazing. You know, it's ironic as well, you know, when I got word of Chris's sentencing, I did a piece on, you know, the history of the Liberty Bell, and I did some research on it and found out more than I ever knew. I mean, I'd kind of known the story from colonial days. I didn't realize the abolitionists took it as a symbol, the women suffragettes took it as a symbol. I mean, for them to be cracking down so hard on a free speech event and a protest of federal marijuana prohibition at the Liberty Bell, I think does them more harm than any good they could possibly imagine they're doing.
Yeah, it's funny, because, you know, Chris, I'm a foul-mouthed comic with a high school education. Chris likes history, and he's very rich on things that have happened throughout Philadelphia. And when Chris chose the spot for us down there, you know, I'm like, why are we doing this on federal land? And, you know, he gave me this old dork, you know, dorky backstory about, you know, liberty, and, you know, I feel a lot differently about it now, because I've spent so much time, you know, you walk past this stuff every day in Philadelphia, and you don't even think about the blood, sweat, and tears it took in the building, this is the great nation that it once was. And by symbolically doing it there, and being oppressed in that area, it almost, you know, makes them look bad from the onset, I think.
Absolutely. And that's why it's so important, what you guys were doing there, and what continues to happen there, because it's such a stark visual and such a reminder of our colonial history and our American history, and the symbols that we stand for, and the freedom that we're fighting for. I mean, my God, to think that, you know, the founding fathers would be rolling in their graves over the federal government reaching out to punish you guys and trying to squelch not only just your free speech, your free association with your girlfriend, for God's sake. That sounds so draconian, so un-American. I'm glad you guys are fighting for this. If there's a, is there a contact way, Facebook, if they give some contact information if people want to help you out? Because I know, you know, fighting these things can sometimes be financially draining, and of course, people might want to give to your city council campaign as well.
Sure. Right now, the Poe for City Council page on Facebook is there. We're also in the midst of setting up our campaign committee and launching Monday at poforcitycouncil.com. I know that Chris and Don have some things set up for their extraordinary fines that they have to pay. You know, look at me, look up me on Facebook, Nikki Allen Poe. I am a transparent individual. If you have any questions, if you'd like to talk, if you'd like to help, I respond to every wacko that sends me a message, no matter how crazy. So please, you know, contribute to, you know, the cause, because I feel like the marijuana movement, you know, it's an amazing thing with a lot of amazing people, but I think, you know, the success of Colorado and, you know, the upcoming success of Washington, a lot of people are starting to just rely on the idea of celebrating what's happened for the good, and not realizing that there is a war right now. People are dabbing in bars in Colorado. I mean, Russ, you're well-traveled, you know? And over here on the East Coast, you know, we have the federal government breathing down our neck like we're a John Gotti. We're the Cam Guido crime family.
The Cam Guidos. That's very good. Ah, N.A. Poe, Nikki Allen Poe, folks in the chatroom are saying you're a true patriot, and before we let you go, do you have any final words to impart upon our audience here?
No, a little bit. Just remember that there's a fight on the East Coast, and, you know, the Panic Hour, and, you know, trying to think locally, you know, and change things locally, and think about the global idea of it. But, you know, an idiot comic like me, running for city council, and maybe having a chance to win it and get in and affect some change, you know, you know, potheads can take over this country.
That's right. And for the last three presidents, we have, right?
Yeah, right.
N.A. Poe, you are the man. Thank you so much for joining us here on Activist Agenda, and good luck in your city council race. We'll keep following up with you. When is the election?
It's May 20th.
May 20th.
If you're in Philadelphia, register to vote. You know, if you've never voted in your life, and there's one time you want to vote, it's fucking right now.
This would be the time. Thanks so much, my man. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Russ.
All right. When we come back, part two of our Fire Michelle Lenhart from the DEA rant. Some of the crazy stuff this woman says. What about the puppies? What about the puppies? Stick around, we'll be right back.
The Russ Belleville Show is blogging and podcasting daily at radicalruss.com.
Marijuana and alcohol are the two most popular recreational drugs in America. Marijuana smoking is non-toxic, relatively safe, and has a low risk of dependence. Alcohol drinking is potentially fatal, dangerous to society, and is quite addictive. Marijuana is safer, so why are we driving people to drink? That's the question of the new book, Marijuana is Safer, So Why Are We Driving People to Drink? by Paul Armentano, Mason Tvert, and Steve Fox. Visit amazon.com or chelsea green.com today to order your copy of Marijuana is Safer, or visit marijuanaissafer.com. 420 Radio is 24-hour marijuana.
Marijuana costs you more than you think. Live above weed, live above the influence.
The Russ Belleville Show.
I'm not very good at singing songs, but here's a try.
According to lifelong pot smoker and rocket scientist Carl Sagan, making apple pies from scratch is extremely difficult.
If you wish to make an apple pie from scratch, you must first invent the universe.
Radical Russ and the Rolla J Studios crew will be right back after these messages.
A morning filled with 400 million suns, rising from the murky cosmos.
You want answers?
I'm as mad as hell, and I'm not gonna take this anymore!
You want answers?
You have offended my family.
I think I'm entitled.
You want answers?
I want the truth!
Then you have offended a Shaolin Temple.
You can't handle the truth!
Surely you can't be serious?
I am serious, and don't call me Shirley.
Radical Rant.
All right. If you tuned in yesterday, you caught our radical rant on why we need to fire Michelle Lenhart, and I gave you a whole bunch of looks at her past, but it's her present now as well that is calling for her to really be replaced by someone who's gonna use fact, science, reason, and logic when it comes to our drug policy. The latest thing for her has been this "What About the Puppies?" That's what I'm gonna call it. "What About the Puppies?" She's actually come out and said that, that the, that we have to worry, and this was something she hadn't been worried about before when it came to marijuana legalization, but we have to worry about the dogs that are getting into edibles. This was, she was testifying at the House Appropriations Subcommittee hearing for the DEA's budget, and she says this, quote, "There was just an article last week, and it was on pets. It was about how the unanticipated or unexpected consequences of this, and how veterinarians now are seeing dogs come in, their pets come in, and being treated because they've been exposed to marijuana. Again, it goes back to the edibles. It goes back to products that are in the household that are now made from marijuana, and it's impacting pets. We made a list of outcomes that we thought might happen in these two states. We never thought of putting pets down." Uh-huh. Well, that's actually a lie, because the DEA and law enforcement have put pets down since the beginning. They've been putting them down with gunfire in their DEA raids, in their sheriff raids, in their state police raids, over otherwise nonviolent, law-abiding marijuana consumers. I'm not gonna play any of them. I'm not gonna play any of the video, but you've heard it time and time again here on the Russ Belleville Show, as we've covered the issue of cane aside by cop, where it's standard operating procedure for the cops to come in in these raids and to shoot the dogs. We just played one yesterday on Toker Talk Radio from Philer, Idaho, where the cop was serving just a ticket and then shot the guy's dog, a little yippy dog that was biting at his heels. So don't give us this "What About the Puppies?" as far as they might eat some edibles and, you know, get a little shaky and a little wobbly compared to the... you know, get a little shaky and a little wobbly compared to the, the jackbooted thugs bursting into our homes and killing our beloved family pets. That's pretty desperate, Michelle Lenhart, to have to reach all the way to what about the puppies? I guess, I guess what about the children isn't working so well anymore now that the kids are, you know, getting healed from epilepsy. And another part that she had mentioned that really bothered me is she had said that, you know, that marijuana, that, that, that the, basically the people had been misled on marijuana legalization is another one of her talking points. And it's they, they never really were clear about how we were, you know, what's going to happen when we legalize marijuana. Well, one of the things that she had to say here, let's see if I can find it. Here we go, is that marijuana, that we were told, that we were telling people that marijuana is no big deal, that marijuana is no big deal. And I've heard this from other prohibitionists who like to paint us in the corner of saying, you said marijuana was harmless. It's not so harmless. Look, this kid fell off a balcony, blah, 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 blah. Who are these people that are saying marijuana is harmless or that marijuana is no big deal? Who are they? I'd like to know some names so that I could track them down and maybe fix their rhetoric a little bit. You're fighting a straw man because that's not what any of us in the drug reform movement have ever said. We've never said marijuana is harmless, much less harmful than alcohol, sure, and less harmful than, than cocaine, meth and heroin, which of course, Michelle Lenhart would not admit to when she was grilled by Representative Cohen and Representative Polis in 2012. And, and she has this concern about, you know, how are we going to get factual information out to the kids, to the teens, to the parents? Well, when you can't admit that marijuana is less addictive than heroin, something that any eighth grader knows is true, then you're the one who's not getting the facts and the science to the kids and the parents and the teens about marijuana. And then when you try to get them any information, they're inclined to not believe you. And not just on marijuana, they become inclined not to believe you on any of your drug recommendations because my gosh, if you were lying about something so blatantly obvious as marijuana, what else must you be lying about? We are the ones through regulation, Ms. Lenhart, that are trying to get the correct information out to the kids. And that's actually why the perception of risk by kids has gone down because they've gotten some factual information. They've realized that yes, it's addictive, but not really any more addictive than caffeine and the withdrawals are not that bad. That's not to say it's harmless. That is to say it's far less harmful. And no risk? Who are the people that are saying there's no risk from marijuana? Of course there's risk for marijuana. The risk from marijuana, it's a substance, it's a substance that can alter your perceptions. By definition, that adds a little bit of risk, but it's a little bit of risk. None of us think that we should be living a completely risk-free life or we wouldn't have bars, we wouldn't have cars, we wouldn't even eat guitars to, sorry, Blondie reference. But the point being that we don't live in nerf world. There is risk and I am willing to admit, as I believe any reasonable marijuana legalizer would, that there is some added risk from marijuana use to society in general and, and to the user. Kid fell off a balcony. Yes, getting high on edibles, especially if you overdose on them can make you dizzy and lethargic. Probably shouldn't be around high ledges. I'm willing to accept that on the warning label. Warning, eating this whole thing could make you dizzy and lethargic. Stay away from hotel balconies. I'm cool with that because I think that disclaimer is gonna be so much shorter and more succinct than most of the TV advertisement pharmaceutical disclaimers that we hear day after day after day. At least eating marijuana is not going to cause anal leakage or possible fatal episodes. I don't know how they make that plural, but anyway. Another concern from Michelle Lenhart is that we've misled the people about how much money would be raised. We've misled them. Well, gosh, we don't have to mislead anymore if that's supposedly the case. Actual numbers are in now, Ms. Lenhart. $2.1 million in recreational marijuana tax revenue in the month of January in the state of Colorado. $2.1 million. Now, unless there's been an accompanying $2.1 million in social harm, then it's a gain. And it's more of a gain because now, as she points out that we say, police could go after real crimes. She says that as if it's not true, that somehow police aren't going after real crimes after marijuana legalization, but the numbers speak otherwise. In the state of Colorado, during the year before legalization, there was an average of about 800, 850 marijuana arrests of all types, right? Possession, cultivation, whatever, 800 a month or so. Since marijuana legalization, it's fallen in the most recent month to about 100 of all marijuana arrests, over an ounce as well, right? Big possession, felony possession, cultivation, an eight to one reduction, 800 arrests down to about 100. So unless those cops are just sitting around eating donuts, Ms. Lenhart, perhaps they are working on other crimes. And in the state of Washington, they don't have monthly numbers, they have annual numbers. And just for the misdemeanor arrests, so this doesn't count the felonies over 40 grams or the cultivation, but just for mere possession of 40 grams or less, went down from over 5,500 arrests in 2012 to 120 in 2013. So I imagine those cops that were processing the 5,300 or so arrests might be solving other crimes. I sure hope so. Another thing Ms. Lenhart brings out in her testimony is that we had somehow promised that legalization would collapse the Mexican drug cartels. That's right, legalize marijuana and poof, every violent criminal in Mexico suddenly disappears. No, we've never said that. What we have mentioned is that marijuana legalization takes that business away from the Mexican drug cartels. It makes anywhere from 15% to 26% of the revenue of the Mexican drug cartels, but we never said they're gonna go away. They're criminals. They will commit crimes. What we're suggesting is that why do we give the marijuana market to criminals? Why do we give the marijuana market to guys who cut off people's heads and dissolve people's bodies in acid? Why do we give them any slice of that pie? Why give them the easy revenue of marijuana? I've actually heard some of them say, well, you know, if we took marijuana away, well, they'll just turn to harder drugs and, and kidnapping and such. Oh, so keeping marijuana illegal is kind of like a make-work program for criminals. We give them something easy to do, something so, not so threatening so that they won't do the bad stuff. Cause that's really what that comes down to. Folks, what we are experiencing here is gonna be so fun as every single one of these prohibitionists gets put deeper and deeper into the dustbin of history. This is the desperate last days of the drug war and the comedy that will arise from their reactions is going to be priceless. Already seeing the Epilepsy Foundation come out in favor of access to whole plant medical marijuana, already having the polls in Colorado go up after legalization, already seeing that the sky hasn't fallen in Washington and Colorado is causing these guys to go into a panic, into a frenzy. And you saw it the way they jumped like vultures on that poor kid that fell off the balcony. But we will be here cataloging it all. It's gonna make for some wonderful content, trust me. And Michelle Lenhart, I'm in that unenviable position, kind of like comedians at the end of the Bush administration where, you know, you want to see the guy gone, but so good for material. Folks, that's all the time we got for hour one, but stay tuned for hour two, Toker Talk Radio. The phone lines will be open at 971-533-7111. We'll be hanging out and dabbing with Brian the Red and Roscoe P Coltrane sitting at my feet. He's got a new ball, so he's a happy dog. And stay tuned tonight, Herb Thrasher Flower Hour, we got special in-studio guests, the winners of the Portland Winter Metal Olympics will be here and I can't pronounce their names, so I'm not gonna try. For Brian the Red, I'm Radical Russ and until next time, take care of each other, tokers.
This is the Russ Belleville Show. The Russ Belleville Show is blogging and podcasting daily at radicalruss.com.